All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the work session for Monday, October 18. Thank you for those who are at home joining us, and thanks for all of our staff and council members who are here in the room. At this time, we'll call today's meeting to order. As we look over the agenda, I wanted to ask my colleagues for a consideration for adjusting the agenda because we do have two special guests who are joining us via Zoom tonight. Our District Five Prince George's County Councilwoman Jolene Ivy will be joining remotely. And also Vice Chair for the Prince George's County Council, Denny Tavares, will also be joining. And that is to give us some insights on the newly proposed redistricting map for Prince George's County. And so with that, I'll move it into discussion to talk through the specific updates, but is there a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Councilmember Roud, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Blunt, and in calling for discussion, I'd propose removing the old business as well as the first two items under new business. Again, want to give time for our county council representatives to talk with us. Are there any other updates the council would be willing to remove at this time to accommodate our special guests? Okay, thank you, Councilmember Blunt. For those in the audience, we're removing item L. Anything else before we go to vote? With that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "aye." Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. At this time, we have on here approval of minutes. But I would ask if there's agreement from the council that we push that to next month. I know I just saw the printout of the minutes and would rather that we have time to review them, and that way, if there's any edits, we can bring those back unless there's time sensitivity from the staff there. Okay. Thank you. So moved, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Blunt, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "aye." Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you all so much. At this time, under appearances, as I mentioned, we're really honored to have Prince George's County District Five Councilmember Jolene Ivy with us. Please give us just a moment because she is connected via Zoom, I believe, so we want to try to get her up so we can hear from her at this time regarding the redistricting. And I do know her time is limited, so hopefully we can get her up here pretty quickly.
I'm here. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I really appreciate being invited to speak tonight. And it's been a pretty trying few days for me. It's been a lot. So, but I did want to just touch base a little bit about the redistricting process. And the 2021 Redistricting Commission had to do their work remotely, you know, because of COVID. And they, despite the challenges, the hallmark of the 2021 Redistricting Commission Plan and Report has been transparency with a focus on citizen and community participation. Now, I would like to note that those are the words that are in the bill, okay? There is a bill, C115-2021, and it is about the redistricting process. And then it eventually takes us to what has transpired. So they, they transmitted, the Redistricting Commission, they transmitted their plan to the county council on September the first. So we've had it in our possession since then. We held a public hearing on the Redistricting Commission Plan on September 28, which included public testimony, comment, and plan proposals. So, and basically, what we all need to keep in mind is that because of COVID, the census data was very late this year. And so there wasn't the usual amount of time to work on redistricting. And as a result of that, the plan of the Redistricting Commission had been, they call a least change map. So since they didn't have time to put it together, they said, let us look at the existing lines. They seem to be working fine. We'll just make little changes on the edges, on the districts that need to be made a little larger or a little smaller based on population. You're trying to get all the population with, you know, plus or minus five, five points. And, and they did a great job, and, you know, nobody's ever 100% happy with these things. But for District Five, it was totally fine because there were no changes. And I think that our district has been going well as far as how we communicate and, and other things involved with our work around the district. So I was not planning to propose any changes because I was fine with the commission's plan. And I had not heard a word from any of my colleagues, not a single one, with giving us a heads up with, hey, I have a different plan. I have, here's why I have a different plan. Nothing until last Thursday when we, when I thought what we were going to do is just go forward officially, vote for the, the commission's plan and move on. But that is not what happened. And, you know, you know that we have term limits on the county council, and one of the members who is term limited. And so you look at that and say, why do you care what the lines are? But in any event, we can all speculate. Councilmember Davis proposed a completely wholly different plan, dramatically different at the last minute, and you could barely see it on the screen. It was really hard to be able to see. It's not like we had a printout. We're all working remotely. And the first thing that I noticed was the port towns. Now, when they're talking about, we made this, this map because we want to unite areas, want to unite municipalities. You know, the port towns has been united and has been working very closely together, even with sharing police services and some things depending on each county. And I have been so impressed with the port towns. In fact, I was on a meeting not long ago where the discussion was, how can we improve branding for the area? How can we do more with different kinds of development? So in any event, and it's been a holistic port towns. It's not just Blatensburg, for example. And I've been really happy to see all of you working together. So I, that's the first thing I noticed. Now, that's not the only change. This plan also takes FedEx Field and most of the surrounding areas away from District Five, which is disappointing to me because I've been working with the Girl Scouts over there about a litter plan to take care of when we have games over there at the, at FedEx Field, if there are activities, people leave, often they end up with trash in their neighborhoods and they were tired of it. So I've worked with the team, I've worked with the Girl Scouts, I've worked with the community over there. And now they just want to rip part of that off because I guess somebody thinks District Six should be the one to represent FedEx Field. Who knows how these things are decided. But I was very, very upset about having Edmiston taken out. And I understood that part of, that the reason for that seemed to be Councilmember Tavares, who's here tonight, wants to have a majority Latino district. And the, the, the lines as they were drawn, it was, it's like 49% Latino anyway, so it wasn't really a huge difference. And, and, and the other thing is that considering that the census had many census tracts in District Two that were undercounted by like 50%, then you can assume that those tracts probably had a lot more Latinos in it than had been counted. So I don't have a problem with having a, a district that's got strong representation from the Latino community. I've certainly been an advocate for the, not just Latino, but for anyone from immigrant background, anyone who's come here trying to become citizens, or, you know, they're refugees or whatever their situation. I'm kind of a lefty. I mean, I was one of the sponsors. I was the main sponsor for the House bill that allows driver's license for undocumented citizens. So I'm certainly on that side. But I did not see the taking Edmiston away from the port towns. That seemed to be something that was done without thought or consideration. And, and certainly with no input from me. So it, that seems to go against what I told you at the beginning of this, when they told us that, you know, the hallmark of the Redistricting Commission had to do with, you know, transparency with a focus of citizen and community participation. So all of that is a sham if this new map is passed. And I really have no patience for, for this process as it has unfolded. And I really hope that the citizen outcry, which has been surprisingly loud, I was, I have to say, I didn't think most people cared where their councilmatic district was, but I think that the unfairness of it, and of course, there's, there are people who are already running for office who suddenly wake up and they're not supposed to be in that district. So that's not right. You know, it's not just that the candidate's been running, it's that the candidate has supporters who have been supporting them. And suddenly to be told, oh, sorry, we moved the lines, your person can't even run. I'm not saying somebody's got to win. I'm saying that we need to allow democracy to take place. So if there's somebody else you'd rather win, go help that person, knock on doors, donate money to that person, whatever you need to do. But to kind of do a quickie, in-run unfair, undemocratic process, I'm not for that. I am not. So I'm glad to have this opportunity to speak to you. If there's someone that you can contact and ask them to please contact their council member. Contact the two at-large members, Councilman Hawkins and Franklin, because the two of them are supposed to look out for the interests of the whole county. And I don't see how this new map does that. What is the point to having at-large council members if they're not able to speak out on behalf of the, the needs of the whole county? So that's how I view it. I'm sure they apparently do it differently. If you get an opportunity to watch the, the meeting from last week, it's pretty appalling to see the way that it was conducted and how the, you know, no amendments were entertained at all. I did offer an amendment to bring Edmiston back into District Five. You know, six, four vote every single time, you know, the four people who voted against the map and for the amendments were me, Danielle Glaros, Nikki Moffer, and Tom Dernoga. The others, with the exception of Rodney Streeter, who's been on medical leave, all voted for it. So you have Councilmember Tavares. I don't know if she's had any kind of change of heart. I know she, if my email is any indication, her, her email is all blown up as well. So I am interested to listen to her perspective. And I do have something, I'm, I'm keeping an eye on my phone. I've got something I have to do that's pretty important at the last, you know, I just got to be able to leave. So I just wanted to, and thank you, Mayor Gant. I mean, I know this is really, you know, really pulled the rug out from under you. I believe that you and the allies and strong supporters of each other, and when you're having events, I tried to attend, I tried to financially support them. You know, I don't see any reason for this change, but I will now stop ranting and let you have your meeting. So thank you so much.
Okay, we're just trying to reduce feedback, but Councilmember Ivy, thank you very much for taking time to be with us and share your perspectives on the redistricting issue. We certainly know how busy you are, and like you said, your email's blowing up, your phone is also blowing up. But the fact that you would attend to give us your insights on the matter is certainly most helpful. We do have to make sure that we're presenting both sides of the issues. And so with that in mind, I know Councilmember Roud and I spoke on Saturday. She contacted the Council Chair Hawkins. He had a conflict and so asked Vice Chair Denny Tavares to join us. And so at this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to Vice Chair Tavares.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers, I see Councilmember Lundey. Are you able to hear? And Councilmember Roud, Jesselyn?
Hi, I'm here.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
Yes, I hear you.
I, I just felt like I was, the feed was a little slow. Okay, so I, I just want to say thank you so much for, for everybody for inviting me, allowing us to, you know, at least for, on behalf of the council, to come forward before you with a, a different side of the story. Miss Councilmember, you did adequately represent the process that we did undergo. I do just want to make a couple of tweaks to say that in that process, we did highlight what were the core values that we were trying to, to enact in this particular map, which were keeping our, our, having this map not just be a reflective of having additional small changes, but to also have it be reflective of the 2020 demographic changes, which were at least in, in a lot of our communities, significant, significant enough that we now, the state of Maryland leads as one of the demographic, the highest demographic diverse, with the highest diversity in the eastern seaboard, and particularly along the south next to New York and Texas. So we're leading that in terms of how diverse we are. And the power base needs to reflect that. We also were speaking to the fact that the municipal, the municipalities needed to remain together, as well as we wanted to create continuous lines to make sure that there wasn't any, like, really funny business or anything. But I want to also recall that she may, may have forgotten, but in the, each and every one of those conversations, I reflected that I was not happy with the current map because for, I would say, the last three or four decades, we, as, as Latinos have, I'm, I'm, I'm an Afro-Latina, so I represent both Black and Latino, and I want the betterment of both communities. But I would like to say that Latinos themselves have been disenfranchised in this county, in, in the county, in the politics, and, and that's easily reflected just in the school system, the fact that for the last 50 years, we've had kids in the most overcrowded conditions in travel trailers. Basically, going to school in the streets. And I know that you have those issues as well. And I think that that's a reflection of a, a lack of voice in, in the political demographics, in, you know. And, and so to me, I feel strongly that we need to have a strong Black and Latino alliance in this county. And so to that end, we all, and, and just to, to kind of reiterate, I was in the newspaper with my concerns. I was on the radio, on WAMU, on NPR, Maryland Matters. I wasn't, I wasn't shying away from that concern. To that end, we all had the equal right, opportunity, and access to talk with our consultant and work with him on redrawing alternative maps. And we all did. We all did. And, and that's what I did. I went behind, I spoke with Percy. I said, look, this is what I'd like to see happen. Let's, let's make it where I said, let's do the wildest thing and let's, I put all my dreams and aspirations in what I would like to see. And the reality is, we all did that. And I said, okay, let's look at these maps. Let's see how, how real it would be to pass a map like A, B, or C. And, and we were having, if, and we were having internal conversations about that. And the thing is that we had individuals like Danielle Glaros at the table. We have a core of six votes where we, we have conversations about this. And let's also remember that Edmiston was in District Two 10 years ago. And also let's remember that the reason why Edmiston was taken out was in the we-out words of a redistricting session, just like that was had last Thursday. Edmiston was taken out so that a certain person wouldn't run against Will Campbell's, and they had to run against Adran Harrison. So let's not, let's not kid ourselves that this is not normal process in how redistricting happens, because it happens every day. And if the shoe were shifted, people would walk forward on that line without a problem. But my thing is that, uh, we weren't, not everybody was satisfied with the current map. We completed, uh, we, we did have equal access to change the maps. I had, I know I drew some maps. And we all came to a consensus internally where we said, this is kind of like the map we think should be. Okay, this reflects a strong African-American presence, given that it is a strong African-American this, a county, and a strong Latino presence, because this is the second largest. We are over 21% Latinos in the district, in the county, sorry. And that means that one out of every five people is Latino. And, and that's the people who were counted. Imagine how higher the percentage is as Ms. Ivy reflected saying that there were certain jurisdictions where over half of the population was not counted. So there, the likelihood that that percentage is even larger of this county reflects to the fact that we should have a, a seat at the table. And so this map reflects that. And I think that this will, this shouldn't be a zero-sum game. This should be how we all lift all bolts together, working together to build a stronger Prince George's County. And so to me, with all due respect to Ms. Ivy, I think that we want to be able to build something that is for the betterment and improvement of the overall county and not just, just looking parochially. And that's how I saw this. Because I think that this, this should be the ultimate goal of this map. With regards to what could happen tomorrow, I will be as equally surprised as Ms. Ivy at this point with everything that has happened in the last 96 hours. So we'll see. But what we, what I do want to say is that the core anchor institutions of this county have had a voice, and their voices have been taken into concern with regards to what's going to happen within the 96 hours. And so that's where we are. And again, if you have any questions of me, do let me know. But I feel that, at least in my district, you know, for those of you who may not know what I've been able to achieve over the last years that I've been in office, you know, $10 billion of development, not the putting in construction, nine new schools, two new libraries. And I can tell you that with the same heart that I've helped build all of my district, all across, in every single corner, and you could go to the, the heart of the mall at Prince George's, along Route One, along Eager Road, West Hyattsville, North Brentwood, all around, you will see transformation. And, and you could go to the demolished communities and schools that are in the rubbles and under construction as we speak. Change is going to come. And if change is going to come to District Two, change is going to come to Edmiston as well. And they will not be left behind. No one will be left behind because if God willing, I have a say and a vote in the matter, we will be bringing everybody along as well. So with that, and, and Tracy knows how to reach me, and we're probably as, as politically close as she is to Ms. Ivy, I would say, Ms. Tracy, Dan and I are also very close allies as well, and I do have her best interests at heart, not just from her, her professional side, but also from her side, even in her professional capacity when she works, because she does work in my district. So I have had a very close relationship with her as well. And she knows that she can trust me and my word. So. Okay. So with that, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. And if it's okay, just wanted to follow up because one of the things that was shared with the community last Thursday was that there's no opportunity for the public to give comments. And I do want to give you an opportunity to speak to that because I understand, after watching the meeting, that tomorrow, there's, this is on the agenda where the public can submit written or verbal comments. Following that, the council will meet as a whole and determine which map they're going to approve, and that has to be done by November 30. So could you just talk through that, that process and make sure I didn't misrepresent that? Because I don't want the public to feel that they don't have an opportunity to share their concerns either for or against.
No, thank you. We do have, if you guys, if anyone can submit, you know, the comments, but the reality is that we are very limited in time and very tight in time, given all the things that we've got to work on in the district, and in the, sorry, in the county with regards to legislation. So the time is, is limited. We have, like you said, till November 30 to do it, but we also have to have a first, second, third reader. We've got to prepare the bill. And so that was the concern with regards to making sure. The key issue is that tomorrow is the last day to submit legislation in the county. So this is why we would be unable to reopen the process to extend the process for consideration of, of future, future iterations of the map. The law reads that we've got, we, tomorrow is the last day. We could probably submit things like resolutions and, and smaller things that don't necessarily need a full process. But when it comes to legislation, tomorrow is the last day for the charter. So anything that comes in, you can submit. We are hearing your voices now. My recommendation is to try to get it in as soon as possible, but that's kind of where we are right now.
Okay, thank you for that. And I want to come back to Councilmember Ivy. I believe she had some additional comments. And then Councilmember, again, I know your time is limited, so the council may have a few questions if you don't mind taking those. But I want to turn the floor back to Councilmember Ivy first.
Thanks, and I'll try to keep my dogs quiet. But a couple of things. One, I would just like to remind everyone that this, even assuming that this map goes into effect, it doesn't start until after the next election. So for the duration of this term, Edmiston will still be in District Five. And so I'll continue to represent Edmiston at least until the next election. And, and we'll be happy to do so. I'm hopeful that someone changes course and decides, you know what, this is such a great idea after all. And at the moment, there are 10 people voting. There's one, Councilman Streeter, has been out on medical leave, and I don't know exactly when he's coming back. So I don't know if he'll be voting or how he would vote. Although I did note that, and I'm, he's not about, been involved in this at all. I'm not accusing him of anything whatsoever. But his biggest opponent in the last election was taken out of his district in this map. So surprising, isn't it? So I'm sure they would expect him to, to support it. I'm not saying that he would. I know that last year, he did vote initially for the, you know, the property tax plan that Derek Davis, again, had, had been promoting, trying to get it on the ballot. And, and Councilman Streeter is the one who, who changed. And um, and Councilman Streeter is the one who, who changed course and changed the trajectory. Of that, so I'm, I'm not sure which way he would vote, I have no idea. Um, I'm a little concerned that. Count, that Vice Chair Taveras is saying a couple of things, one, she said six council members. Discuss this legislation, which would be um, a quorum. And that is against our rules, you, you can't have them get together and discuss. Uh, legislation and make a decision, that's why we have these rules, right? So I'm disturbed that not only I could tell that it happened, but clearly they were all in on it.
No, not together, it didn't happen together.
Okay, and I'm also generally I've been um, concerned about this packing of. Like as many of anybody into a district as possible. Um, because I think that in, in the end, it dilutes the, the power, right? So. Here is, here is Councilwoman Taveras before us right now, she is the Vice Chair of the Prince George's County Council, she represents District Two. I'm, feel like she won in that district before it had as many Latino voters in it as it has today. And I believe that in the next election, I, I know Victor Ramirez is running, he's a former, um. He's the former Senator and delegate from that area. I think he has a very strong chance of winning and considering that he won. Twice for delegate, twice for Senate. And, and in reality, even when he ran for State's Attorney, while he may have lost that countywide. He won it in District Two. So he has done that, not because only Latinos vote for him. He has been bringing people together. And in fact, he supported Councilwoman Taveras, she used to work for him. Uh, he was her strongest supporter when she ran the first time. And it was a very close vote, I think it was six votes different, so I'm sure that his support. Definitely put her over the edge. But I don't see that it makes any sense that now we have to make it even more Latino in District Two, well, you know what that does? It makes it less Latino in District Five, right? And if I were the kind of person who could say. Uh, well, I don't have to worry about those people anymore, I'm not going to vote for them anymore, I mean, who knows who's going to take my seat in the coming years, right? I think that the more legislators who have to be concerned with the Latino. Residents, the better, I don't think it makes sense to take them all and put them into one district. That's something that we don't like with them for black people either, you don't want them all in one district because then you end up with one. Person winning that office and never having the opportunity for there to be more than that. So I'm, I'm, uh.
I'm sorry, can we speak to the data? Can we speak to the data because of the, the thing is.
I'm not sure that the people here in Bladensburg really want to get into us with the back and forth about the data for District.
No, but the thing is, that, that's, that is a misrepresentation because it, the. The data shows that Latinos will be five out of nine districts in the county. Now, is strong presence where they would have to be taken into account in the voting block. So it's not less, it's actually. Distributed so that they could be more significantly represented throughout the county, so I.
So I take Edmiston away from me, you didn't take Edmiston away because you wanted. Fewer Latinos, you took Edmiston because you wanted more, so that takes them from someone, you're taking them from me. And I object, and I don't think it's right for the port towns. And I think it's disrespectful to them, it's disrespectful to me. And um, frankly, I think that their council members, um, who we serve together with. I, I've been told that they, um.
I mean.
Haze me, haze me, we're adults, we're not in college, like this.
Okay, I mean, but, but, but.
It's disrespectful and it has to end and this kind of.
This is also disrespectful, Jolene.
Councilmember Ivy, Madam Mayor is trying to get the floor.
I apologize because it is a delay with.
It is about reaping what you sow at the end of the day.
Tie on to something, just so my colleagues and I really understand. When you look at the number of voters. That you would lose from the town of Edmiston. Do you know what that number of voters looks like? Um, because I was reading the report last night and. Trying to get in on specifically, what number of voters are we talking about that you would potentially lose if Edmiston is moved out of your district?
Yeah, that was Denny's proposal, so I'll let her speak to it.
No, I, we could get those numbers, but the thing, it's a, it is a very small number, but the, the, the reality is that. We, we've grown over a hundred thousand people, so I mean, the, it's. We've, we've grown significantly. Uh, throughout, so we're talking about. A sig, uh, you know, sorry, a significant number throughout the county, so we could get to that number.
So, um. Our town administrator just looked it up for me, sorry for the feedback here, give us a second. And so it looks like the population shift would be about fourteen hundred forty-five people. That would potentially move from District Five over to District Two. Traditionally, as you all know, we don't get huge voter turnouts. From our communities, which is a shame, but that's why I was just sort of asking, what are the real impacts? Um, in terms of the voters shifting from one district to the other, so it looks like from that fourteen hundred and forty-five, um, voters. A lower percentage of that. Would be, you know, potential, um, voters for. Um, District Two if that change were to occur. But again, I, I, sorry for the, the. The heated debate, but I think it's also good to see the passion behind both sides of the argument because we need to be best informed. So that we know how to proceed moving forward. And so I'll just ask, you know, from either of you, are there any final? Comments that you would like to um, share with us at this time? I'll go with, to you first and then back to Councilmember Taveras.
We can't hear you.
Okay. Uh, we were just asking for any final comments uh, from Councilmember Ivy and then we'll go to Vice Chair Taveras.
I really appreciate your time and what I'm hoping is that there will be enough of an outcry and I, my email has been blowing up. Over this email from three different accounts. Texts. Phone calls, I mean, I can't keep up with. The number of people who reached out to me and I assume that my colleagues are getting at least that many. Emails and, and people reaching out to them, so um, I am. Strongly against Edmiston being moved out of District Five. And I am confused as to why um, Councilwoman Taveras would want to continue. To advocate for that. I also though, see the College Park. The mayor and council did not want the changes that would take them all into District One. Neither does the District One Councilmember and neither does the District Three Councilmember, who both voted against it. You know, Tom Durnoga and Danielle Glaros and. What was interesting to watch, Danielle Glaros has been on. Their team, so to speak, all this time. So if you will do something like this to your friend. What will they do to the rest of us? So I, I'm very concerned that um. That this whole process is played out the way it has, it's, it's disappointing. And I'm just, um. I'm sorry that it's gone this way, I really thought that it was going to be a much simpler process. And I thought that we already knew what the map was going to be because the least change map was the one that. Um, had the support of the community, but that doesn't seem to um, be the case for, for the majority of the council. So we'll have to see what happens, um. Again, we went through this before with the property tax. Um, issue and there was a public outcry and people reached out to their council members, they reached out to the county executive. And somehow there, a change was made, so I believe that. When, when people feel the heat, then they see the light, and so it is your job. As a resident to, to speak up and. You know, maybe you think it's a great idea if you support the, the map, um, I think you should let people know that too. I, I can't tell you how to think or how to feel, I'm just telling you how I feel and what I see. So thank you for your time again, and I'm gonna. Give up the floor to Vice Chair Taveras and we'll, then I gotta run, but thanks so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Ivy, and just one thing before you have to run. Are you, following tomorrow's meeting, able to offer additional amendments, I know the legislation has to be introduced tomorrow. But.
Yes, you can, you can. Yes, you can make additional amendments, but I'm, the amendments that I was making got shot down so fast. Uh, and my only amendment that I was offering for my district was to keep Edmiston in. You know, I wasn't fighting to keep FedEx Field in, I was fighting to keep Edmiston in. And I, um. I mean, if you just watch the meeting, you'll see what I'm up against. I don't see anything that I propose is passing, I think it'll be the same six-four vote unless, you know, Rodney Streeter comes and I don't know how he'll vote. But it's been a very, um. You know. Frustrating experience, so yes, more amendments can be made, I've heard that there are more on the way, it could make the map worse, who knows? But um, and because they have six votes, then you can expect. That unless they hear an outcry from the citizens, that it'll, whatever they want will pass. So I'm sorry to have to say that, but it is true, it's politics.
Thank you, Councilmember Ivy, and I know you have to run shortly, so I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Taveras.
Thank you, um. Uh, I really would like to say thank you all to, for this kind invitation, for me to be able to say. These words to you all, um, and bring our perspective from the other side. I do want to say that the plan, again, meets constitutional and Crown T Charter legal requirements, which is critical. The plan ensures that twenty-seven municipalities are, uh, single member and, uh. Are in single member districts. Um, I'm not sure why. We should allow only one. Municipality to be split in two. It doesn't split cities or towns or communities to the, to an extent possible, given census tracts. It doesn't. And uh, the planning includes the three changes. That were recommended by the, the Redistricting Commission. And the plan mirrors. Um, and addresses the county general population growth. And the racial and ethnic diversity as a result of twenty twenty. And that includes the, the Latino majority, um, councilman district. Um, my thing is, I feel that, uh. There will be some changes, but. Again, it will, we will be taking the voice of the, of the Yankers. Redistricting, we have to recognize is ultimately. A political process, it happens every ten years, there are winners and there are losers. If you're not at the table, you're part of the menu. That's just the way of the political dynamic, it happens to us, it hap, um. It happens within us, it happens at every level, if the tables were switched. I'm sure. Ms. Ivy would be running as far with the flag to say, here I am. I, I, I would. And the thing is that we have. We have, uh, again, we saw this when, well, not with me telling you, but we saw this when Edmiston was taken out. Of, of District Two prior. We saw this in the past. And so this is why we are, um, that's why Edmiston is no longer part of District Two, frankly. Um, let's remember, again. It's a little bit of the history left enough Prince George's County. So we just want to do what is best for the county and not necessarily. And looking to see how we can move the county forward. In, in a larger, and, and also let's just remember also, when we're looking even at particular areas. That, that. I know the issue in District One, but let's look at the leadership and the diversity within that leadership. There's not much diversity there for a, a district, for a county that is eighty-five. Or more percent black and Latino. There's hardly any diversity in that area in the leadership that are represented. And that's all I'm saying, we need to have diverse. Uh, leadership at all levels of the county, and I think as a black and Latino county, we need. We need to be strongly together and have that be represented at every step. Of, of the process.
Thank you so much, Madam Vice Chair. Bear with us one second.
Yeah, um, Jolene, you put Jocelyn, but she's one out of seven. She's the only one out of seven leaders, it's seven, out of seven leaders, it's six white people and, and Jocelyn.
That, that comment was directed to the chat, um, for those who are viewing via YouTube or Facebook Live, um, in reference to District Twenty-One and Delegate Jocelyn. Peña Melnick, so just to clarify. We have a Jocelyn sitting on the dais right now and she said, hey, not me. So just wanted to clarify, not this Jocelyn.
I love your background, by the way.
But again, thank you, Councilmembers Ivy and Councilmember Taveras for taking time to inform us in our communities and we will look forward to watching you all work. The meeting is tomorrow at ten AM. For all of our residents, we encourage you to go, um, if you don't know the website, just Google Prince George's County Council. Once you're on the website, if you navigate down to calendar and click that. Up will populate a list of the upcoming meetings where you can find the agenda. Um, and you, I'm thinking it may be too late, it's after three PM of course, so. You may not be able to sign up for oral, but you can still submit written emails. And as was noted, um, in the chat here, we recommend you send your remarks to all of the council members so that they all. Understand, um, how you feel about this matter. Um, and so. The time now is six twenty, so we do want to.
Madam Mayor, are you going to entertain any council member questions?
Absolutely, so the time now is six twenty. And we do want to just, um, talk through it ourselves in terms of reactions from our team here. Uh, and so I'll just go alphabetical order, Councilmember Blunt, any reflections or comments? Okay, uh, Councilmember Lundee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And also want to say thank you to, um, our distinguished, um, Honorable Councilwomen Ivy and Councilwoman Taveras for coming on this evening. I did submit, um, my email to the full county council. Um, and not in favor of, um, dividing and cutting up the county, especially. Um, dividing our port towns community. And so my remarks have been there and I just want to, um. Reach out to Chairman Calvin Hawkins, who unfortunately couldn't be with us this evening. Um, that because he is the people's champion, that he would be a champion for us now. And that he would reconsider his vote of yes for this new map. And he would, um, vote no for it and vote yes for the, um, map that was, um. Submitted by the Redistricting Committee that was commissioned by the county council. And so those are my remarks, my written remarks have already, already been submitted. Again, thank you for coming this evening and again, um, Madam Mayor, I yield back.
Thank you, Councilmember Lundee for submitting your written, uh, remarks regarding the matter and for your reflexions, reflections just now. I'll turn it over to Councilmember Rout and then, um, share my perspectives and, uh, then go to staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I too would like to thank, um, Councilwoman, uh, Taveras for, for coming, um, for. Councilmember Hawkins, as Madam Mayor shared, I reached out to, uh, Councilmember Chair Hawkins. Um, just to hear the other side because I did receive written correspondence from Councilwoman Ivy, thank you, Councilwoman Ivy for also attending. Um, so that we can receive, um, a robust update. I do have a few questions, I was hoping to ask and get them. Which is now either further, further exacerbated by, uh, the, the, the back and forth that went on today. I just want to know the purpose of splitting up the port towns, we talk about municipalities, um, but. We talk about municipalities, but the Port Towns is a, if, you know, the history passed the last ten years. The town of Bladensburg encompassed the whole Port Towns. And all four of the municipalities were all together. And during my research, the Port Towns made up the whole town of Bladensburg. And so, putting the Port Towns with Edmiston, Cottage City, Quomar Manor, and Bladensburg all in one, we have worked very collaboratively with a lot of different issues over the last ten years to include traffic, storm mitigation and drainage, green initiatives. And if I may say, Mayor Gant has been one of the town of Bladensburg's strongest supporters. And so, breaking that community up is gonna be detrimental to the advancement of all of the Port Towns, as Bladensburg being the lead. And so, I, I really wanna understand the purpose of splitting up the Port Towns. We're talking about the purpose of municipalities. Why couldn't we swing Edmiston the other way? Where all of Edmiston, which is a difference of three voting households, as I looked up in the data, why didn't we just put all of Edmiston in District Five instead of District Two? Like, it didn't have to be split that way, because we do make up a strong community. So, I'm really looking for that answer tonight, so that I may, but I understand, being an Afro-Latina, I understand the purpose, but to me, it sounds more like segregation and not diversity. And so, I think that we should champion diversity amongst all of our districts, because the town of Edmiston looks very close to the town of Bladensburg. Forty percent, forty-six percent Latino representation. I did the, I, I see the data. And so, I really wanna understand tonight, what is the purpose of splitting up the Port Towns?
And Councilmember Taveras, if, if you wanna respond.
It, yes, thank you. It's not necessarily a issue of the Port Towns as much as we were just looking at the numbers. I don't agree that, I don't, I don't agree that it is segregation, because let's be, let's be real. I mean, if we look at the south part of the county, we have a whole, we have areas that are eighty percent African-American. I mean, eighty-six, eighty-five, eighty-seven percent. I mean, that's, and no one is, nobody's commenting on that, right? So, all I'm saying is that we, we too need a power seat at the table, that's all. And, and I do think that I, the map on Thursday is a little bit more diluted and a little bit more reflective of, of the diversity of the new diversity that is reflected out of the twenty-two census. And in terms of, I think, a splitting, I don't, I, like I was telling you, Gant, I don't agree. I think that this is even more powerful for you to have, this is why College Card is so powerful, because they have not one, but two council manics that advocate for them. They've got two, they have Toldenoga and Daniel Daras. Similarly, you would have someone like me, or Victor, or Yolanda Quintanilla, who's also running, whoever gets elected, and Ms. Ivy. You would have more say, a greater portion of advocacy county to get you more money. I, and, and behind the scenes, you're gonna tell me that I haven't given your organization's money? I'm somebody that is, I've been in your corner personally for the last eight years, since I was working in Victor's office. You're gonna, I mean, we, I made a call, I mean, I can't reveal everything I've been working on, but in terms of the money we provided you, not only when we're talking about Bladensburg, Port Towns, we have been working together to make sure, what is it, Tangle, not Tanglewood, what is it, with homegirls? On Tanglewood Road?
Community Forklift?
Community Forklift. Sorry, my dog, my dog needs treats. Yeah, give him, give him a treat. To make sure that my, the, those organizations, Eco Farm, Eco City Farms, get money. And I am somebody that is right there making sure that those organizations get taken care of. So, I don't think that, I don't see this as a detriment. I see it as a value add. And I would be the first to tell you, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna misinterpret it in any kinda wrong way, but I kinda feel that for a long time, some of our areas in District Forty-Seven have not moved us forward as significantly as other areas. And I hope you would beg to agree with me on that. And if I were given the chance, the same thing that I've been able to do in District Two, we would do in other parts as well. And I don't wanna be lo, I don't wanna be left behind out of the District Forty-Seven map. I, I may be running for delegates, you know, but I still consider District Forty-Seven my family. And I would be, the same way I'm advocating for my corner, I wanna be advocating for yours. So, I don't think, I don't think, again, this is not a zero-sum game. This is about lifting all boats.
And I do wanna just share, I've spoken to Mayor Gant directly to ask for her feedback, because it affects her community. And what I've shared with her, it touches on something Vice Chair Taveras just stated. You know, in my view, I see it as a win-win. On the state level, Edmiston is not in District Forty-Seven, they're in a different district. They have a different senator than we have in Forty-Seven, they have two different delegates. That does not preclude us from working together, whether it's Eco City Farms, whether it's Big Belly Grants. We've still been successful going to the state advocating for the Port Towns. Borders don't separate Edmiston from Bladensburg, Cottage City, and Quomar Manor. And so, in looking at the county and what this redistricting map represents, my perspective is I see it as a strength, and again, what Councilmember Taveras stated is what I said to Mayor Gant. If you have a different council member than we have, now we can advocate your council member on the county council, plus District Five council member, plus we have two at-large county council members. That's four votes that the Port Towns now has when we're going to get initiatives. So, four out of eleven, we already have a running start. So, I see it as an opportunity to get more support for our initiatives. And because I've seen the benefit of the fruitful relationships on the county and state level, I, I see it as an opportunity, but I respect the position of Mayor Gant and the council members of Edmiston. And so, if they want our support in asking, you know, that the Port Towns be amended to stay together in District Five, I'm happy to support that, but I feel like in the back of my mind, are we missing having more leverage? So that when we go to ask, we have more people helping us than we currently have. Right now, we have two at-large members and then our District Five representative. But if we can get four, again, I, I see that as a strength. But as, as you all see from the chat and from conversations with Mayor Gant, I do respect their position and wanna support our sister city. So, I'll go to the staff for any reflections before we move on from this agenda item. And again, thank you, Madam Chair, Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. It's been very interesting hearing the back and forth, and I appreciate the opportunity to come in. And I'll just make my remarks extremely brief, but I wanna go back to the two thousand census. And at the time, the Port Towns were only three in number, and they had to work very hard. I was actively involved at the time as a member of the council from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and six in that redistricting process. And both at the state and the council manic levels, those lines were moving around and were, it was an active effort by the Port Towns to stick together. And communities don't like to be fragmented, and that is the right of communities to say, this is what we want, is we want to stay together. And so, when the larger governmental entities are drawing lines and moving a thousand or fourteen hundred people from one side to the other, often, what I believed then and still believe is that those communities should have some right of self-determination and to say, we do wanna stick together. And I understand what Madam Vice Chair was saying about the benefit of having multiple representatives in split districts, but splitting those districts isn't the preference of the Port Towns, wasn't then, and I don't believe it is now if, if Mayor Gant wishes her to be respected and she speaks on behalf of her community. So, I will just offer that historical perspective to say, I think it would be in the county council's interest to move Edmiston back in so that the Port Towns can act as one to advocate for themselves with a primary legislative support system that they can nurture and work with together. And I'll conclude my comments there, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Town Administrator McGory. Anything else, Chief, or Mr. Tenelli? Okay, so, and I know in our case, as was mentioned previously, I think by Councilmember Rout, we do share resources across the P, Port Towns, I almost said PT, but Port Towns, whether it's on public safety side, food resources, I mean, we do have a great relationship. And I frankly feel either way, that will continue. But definitely wanna support Edmiston, because they would be most directly impacted. So, with that, we will conclude our discussion. I think it may be best, though, to just, for the council meeting, the seven o'clock meeting, take up a vote for a letter of support on behalf of Edmiston to remain in the Port Towns that we can submit. And, you know, if everyone agrees, we'll move forward respectfully. The next item on the agenda is the road improvement plan. I know Mr. Hall is not able to be with us due to some much-needed time off, but Mr. McGory, if you wanna walk us through this?
Sorry, this is the road report?
Yes.
I was just reading the chat ever so briefly. So, very quickly, I was asked to put this on the agenda and very promptly got this PowerPoint from Mr. Hall, the Public Works Supervisor. We talked about it, and it is roughly in priority order. I asked him, you know, does this batting order of page one, page two, page three reflect the same priority order? His sense was that that, the answer to that is yes. He's on leave this week, and otherwise would've been here to present his views himself, but I'm happy to do the best I can. I did ask that, we do have some recent costs from the Fifty-Eighth Avenue resurfacing project, but it's hard to compare apples to apples, because the asphalt is charged by the ton, the curb and gutter is by linear feet, and then there's a square yardage charge as well. So, it's really hard to, to come up with the apples-to-apples comparisons among these things. But Mr. Hall did go out and, and measure not just the linear length of the roadways that you'll see on each of the pages, but then went back and did the widths too. So, we now have all the information to do some rough back-of-the-endle of calculations to apply some numbers to those. And then with those numbers in hand, we can go back and reassess how much of the budget we wanna put towards this, these projects using highway user revenues or whatever other revenue sources the town wishes. So, that's all I'll say unless there are council, questions from the council.
Thank you, Mr. McGory. So, just briefly, I noticed in the budget, so we have about a hundred and, I think, eighty thousand in highway user revenues. And in looking at some of these damaged streets, for instance, Fifty-seventh Avenue, it is heavily trafficked. Mainly, I think the damage comes from the metro buses that frequent, just because of the bowl that we have. They've gotta come in on Fifty-seventh, around the loop, and back out. So, that continues to be a challenge, but there's no way I can see us doing anything with that until school is out. So, with some of these other streets, and I noticed you had Decatur Street on here, but it didn't include the cul-de-sac. It is absolutely horrible. There are chunks of the, what do you call it, the top layer of service, or surface that are completely missing. So, I'd love it if, you know, that could be considered as a priority area. Again, it's mainly the cul-de-sac, though, but not this portion of the street that's on the diagram.
So, I'm sorry, just to clarify, Mayor, if I understood you correctly, your, what is proposed for Decatur Street is the cul-de-sac?
Okay.
So, as you can see, the white line on there, that white line is describing the hundred-and-twenty-two-point-seven.
Oh, gotcha, okay, my mistake, yep. I was looking at the main street there.
I, I did have to ask this myself, because those are all Decatur Street house numbers, even though it would look like it was some different street name, but it's a spur. Yeah, so I apologize for the confusion there.
No worries, and I'll take questions from the council, starting with Councilmember Rout.
Thank you so much, Mayor James. So, I actually, I'm a resident on Fifty-Fifth Avenue, and last year, we were here at this same place. And I know that Public Works filled in temporarily the issues on Fifty-Fifth Avenue. So, what happened on Fifty-Fifth Avenue was that we were getting WSSC work done on Tilden, and that's where the big trucks were coming up and down Fifty-Fifth from Annapolis Road. And then we also on Fifty-Fifth Avenue have a similar issue to Fifty-seventh Avenue, where school buses, though, come. I mean, I can count in the morning, it's like twelve school buses, either private PG County Public School buses taking children that have disability or IEPs, because that's a, a stop at their home. And then there is a middle school, there's two middle school stops, one up on Tilden, one down on Spring Road. And then there's elementary school buses, I know, because my children ride the elementary school bus. So, there's a lot of school bus traffic up and down Fifty-Fifth, because they use Annapolis to cut through using Fifty-Fifth. They don't take Fifty-Sixth up, they take Fifty-Fifth up to get hit Spring, Tallsee, Taylor, and then Tilden. So, Fifty-Fifth gets a lot of attention in the mornings. I saw our officers out there this morning doing some, some, some traffic enforcement and traffic control. I say that to say, what can we do? And I asked this question last year, didn't get a real response, so Marie asked it. What can we do to get partnering funds from our PG CPS metro bus partners? Because our roads are really being hammered on in addition to WSSC. I mean, the amount of traffic that we are being responsible for on a regular basis. I've been a resident on Fifty-Fifth for the last ten years, and it has definitely increased. And then subsequently, I remember Mr. Hall saying that WSSC was going to help us patch some of these on Fifty-Fifth alligator patches because of their big dump trucks that were coming to work on Tilden. So, how can we limit or increase the amount of funds that we can get so that we can have a bigger pot to be able to divide and conquer? Yield back.
Thank you, and I'm so sorry, Mr. Hall, couldn't be here with us to answer some of these questions, 'cause I know he was heavily involved with the, the project from the town side, as well as code enforcement officer Reinhardt. They kinda were on the front lines in terms of the interfacing. Mr. McGory, for your benefit, so, beginning in, I believe, twenty-eighteen, WSSC came in to do major infrastructure improvements. The majority of the work was along Tilden, but it did hit some of those side streets. Also in Ward One, Fifty-Sixth Avenue, I think it went over to Fifty-Fourth Place. There were several streets, and we can get you, probably go back in the records and get you the full outline of all the streets that were impacted. For the major roads that were dug up, they came back and repaved all of those. So, that's why Fifty-Sixth Avenue looks great, Tilden looks fantastic. Those streets were done. I hadn't been as familiar with Fifty-Fifth Avenue, Councilmember Rout, where you are identifying, but it may be worth just having an inventory, inventory taken of any residual streets where there was damage, maybe not directly related to the major pipes that went in, but that were residual effects of the work. And perhaps we can go back to WSSC and ask for some funding to help cover that. There's no harm in asking, we realize there's no guarantee, but I think that, that could be a reasonable request, you know, from the town. We're trying to be a good partner, we appreciate the new pipes, most certainly, but if they can help, you know, that would be great. But Councilmember Blunt, Councilmember Lundee, any other questions regarding the road improvement plan? Okay, and, and I do, I'm gonna come to you next, Councilmember Lundee. I do wanna clarify, I did, I think I said one-ninety, but the dollar amount in here from HUI is actually a hundred and seventy-five K. So again, if, um, Mr. Hall could get with our engineer and just get some initial assessments on which makes the highest, the highest priority target to start. Because we don't have a lot of time to start this before winter weather kicks in. So even if we get the planning, the RFP, the council doesn't have to rush, we can take our time and review bids and be ready to go once the weather breaks in the spring. I think the residents would be very appreciative of that. Councilmember Lundie.
So, um, thank you, Madam Mayor. So did we also see the, um, in this plan, the information with respect to the, with this, with the lighting for Fifty-seventh Avenue included on there? That's my first comment.
I think so.
That wouldn't be a part of this, correct?
That's a great question. That would be a separate project, so that money came through a grant. And once our town clerk is here, that's a project that's waiting. And for everyone who's watching, what Councilmember Lundie is referring to is Fifty-seventh Avenue. We received funding, I think it was CDBG funding, uh, to do light improvement along Fifty-seventh Avenue. We did a neighborhood watch walk through there with Councilmember Ratt, Chief, some residents, Councilmember, um, Lundie was with us in route. But noticing how dark it is for pedestrians walking there. So that project, again, it is separate, Councilmember Lundie, but still, still in hold until we get our clerk.
All right. And Part B is also on the Fifty-Seventh, Fifty-Eighth Avenue. There is also a traffic issue, as you know, with respect to the school buses coming from Bladensburg Elementary Schools there also, and also from Elizabeth Seaton. And with the traffic in the school buses, it's like a major jam, and so there's a lot of traffic on that street as well. So, uh, was that included? I can't recall in the plan, Fifty-seventh Avenue.
So that, you're referring to a traffic issue, not so much the road surface issue?
Well, the road, I, well, pardon me, I'm sorry, road, road surfaces, yes.
Okay, so Fifty-Eighth Avenue, the money we got previously through, um, HUR funding did cover the resurfacing of Fifty-Eight, so that's been complete. And we learned in going through that from the engineer, the recommendation was not to put the speed humps back because what was tearing up the street coming that way was the metro buses. So not so much when they were going up the speed hump, but it was when they were coming down, all that weight was dropping. And so the, um, cracks that you see in some of these, um, images, that's what kept occurring. So a few years before this last round, we fixed it, and it happened again. And, and it's mainly on the, the right side, if you will, if I'm going down Fifty-Eight, going toward Emerson because that's the path of the metro buses. So we got the work done. The mitigation tool that we're waiting to implement is the speed cameras. And the idea was no speed humps, we'll put the camera over there so that can be used to mitigate speeding. But to your point about traffic, the, it's just a function of the timing. Several years ago, the prior council did work with the schools and was successful in modifying the start times. It's not perfect, but it did break up as much backup as we used to have. But the reality is, we're still trying to get parents in the flow and the buses in the flow of timing, getting in, getting out. But do acknowledge those backups are still there. And I know our, uh, police department is helpful in trying to manage the traffic control just in an effort to keep people safe. And that will continue.
Yeah, so I do see, so when I do, when I'm over there, I do see that the police department is helping to manage as long, as well as the elementary school staff. And sometimes unfortunately, I don't see the crossing guards there either, so it's like every pedestrian and call for him or herself. So, so, you know.
Councilmember Lundie, do we need another job fair? Help them hire some more crossing guards from the neighborhood?
Well, you know, whatever, that's what I was, that was gonna be my next thing, whatever we can do to help, let's do it.
Yes, agree, agree. So definitely.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Um, and so at this time, uh, Councilmember Ratt.
Yes, I'm sorry. So, Mr. Magory, um, this is a question directly to you. Can we, just the same way we are going back and we're going to start talking with our WSSC partner, I think it's all fair for us to address or go to our metro partner as well as our county partners, um, for the county buses. Is that something that we could take on? Because there is a high number of bus use traffic that may be a little, a, a little bit much for our streets because it's causing us, uh, it's causing a death of fiscal impact.
Mr. Magory, before you answer, just one thought in hearing that question is, if we go down that path, I think what we would need to do is show the financial implications to be able to say, and I, I mean, I can try to help get the data, but X number of buses enter the town of Bladensburg each day to pick up students. And even if we can't get all the routes, I feel reasonably comfortable we could get the key stops. So we know how many buses are coming in roughly. And just try to draw some financial conclusions from that to say, on an annual basis, we estimate this is the financial impact to the town. What, if anything, can the county do to support us? Because if we just go with a blanket ask, I just don't think they're gonna respond. I think we have to be very specific, like this is how much is hurting the town.
And Madam Mayor, we could get that data easily by just putting in Ward One and Ward Two addresses, and all of the buses, the bus stops will populate. So yes, I mean, but, uh, can we take this on? Can Public Works take this on? It's my, it's been my question for about a year.
We're, we're not talking about metro buses, we're just talking about school buses?
Yes.
Okay. Don't take the metro buses.
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay.
Mr. Magory?
So I'll just comment, and I've, I've been down this road several times with other jurisdictions. In my experience, there are owners of roads and there are owners of things that go crossroads. And the owners of things that go crossroads do not fund road reconstruction unless they are toll roads. And that is a clear mechanism for a toll to pay for the people using the road to, to operate on the road. So in, in our jurisdiction, you know, roads may be owned by the federal government, Altar Washington Parkway, or the state government, we have one immediately adjacent here, Route four fifty, et cetera, or the county government, um, or the town government. And so whichever government owns the roads, they're the ones responsible for maintaining the roads sufficient to adapt to the traffic that the roads need to carry. And generally, those ownership of roads mean that the big expensive roads with the most heavy traffic and the heaviest trucks and the heaviest vehicles on them are owned by the feds and then the state, and it's sort of tricked them from there. And the residential streets that should only have mail trucks and maybe school buses, but, um, you know, and passenger vehicles, those are residential streets, so those are owned by towns. So it's very hard to leverage, uh, other agencies that use heavy vehicles to pay a premium to also support road reconstruction efforts. So going back to metro bus, metro buses funded to operate public transit at a loss generally. It's heavily publicly subsidized, and they're not geared to contribute to the damage done by buses, nor our school systems, who are also public entities that are starved for funding and are trying to get, uh, funding from outside resources. So that's not to say we couldn't take on this challenge and make a clear-cut proposal, but in my experience, it just doesn't go anywhere. So I, you know, I, I could see the cause and effect, and I spent many years working on, uh, a small historic town that had a state highway running through it with lots and lots of truck traffic. And the continued request was, can we get the truck traffic off this historic community? Because it's literally rattling these old houses. And the answer was, that's what state highways are for, is to move vehicles from one side of the route to the other side of the road. So, um, anyway, that's just my experience. So I defer to the council on how it wants to allocate staff time, but that would not seem likely to be a fruitful effort in my experience. And Mr. Hall may have other comments or other staff.
Anything, Mr. Tenelli?
That's pretty accurate because, um, I was, when I was on the school board, we had, you know, complaints about, you know, about the bus traffic coming through our towns, and like, well, we're providing a service, picking up your kids, you know, so. And we did try to work with the, um, routing software. If you call the Board of Ed or if you call any, uh, bus transit company, their routing software, they can, they do everything with it. It's live, you know, get all the dat, all, all the data possible. They try to work with it so they're not going down like, um, one-way streets and turning around or something, so. But there are some small asks maybe, but it's pretty hard when you're trying to provide a service. And as Councilmember Ratt said, you know, especially with like, you know, um, special needs buses, I guess, the IEP programs, they do have to pick up, they can't do stops, you know, they have to pick up in front of the houses. And that is a valuable service. And also the metro buses are providing a valuable service. I think I was at previous council meetings where people wanted more metro stops, I think.
Yeah, they did.
So, it's, you know, so.
There's some give and take.
I know, so, it's all.
So, so one caveat I would ask, if you all are amenable, put in the information together. Because what we have now, which we didn't have before, is this infrastructure bill coming and funding associated with that. And so it may be an opportunity to ask early and get a little bit of resources at, and tying it into, um, the infrastructure funding.
A loop, is that what you said?
Yeah. So. And then, um, it is now six fifty-four, and I do want to allow people to take a break before the seven o'clock meeting. So to the council, I wanted to ask if you all are okay. I think most of the items that we haven't gotten to yet are already on the council meeting agenda. So, um, if we could adjourn, take a, a quick break, and then get ready to come back at seven. We have a couple of presentations and want to get folks in place so we can start on time for the seven o'clock meeting. So, um, just want to look around the room, would that be okay, Councilmember Lundie, Councilmember Ratt, Councilmember Blunt? Okay. So again, the remaining items, we will move to the, um, council meeting. So with that, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lundie. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Blunt. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. The work session for today is adjourned.